Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone. Order in the court. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Let's keep the excitement down to a quiet verbal. Quiet, please. Thank you. We're gonna start the city council meeting, and when we knock on the gavel, it's a request, polite request, everyone to refrain from speaking. Thank you. I know there's a lot of excitement in the room. But I would like to call to order the October 11th, 2022 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine. Mayor Protem Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
He's not here, and perhaps that's why everyone was excited, and they thought the meeting was not gonna start yet. Mayor Kasakian is traveling on city business and will not be here today. And I'm serving as the pro tem, and I will be conducting the meeting. Yes, let's all rise, please, and do our flag salute. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The invocation, please.
Let's begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tongva people. Yesterday was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and in honor of the day, I'd like to play a Tongva invocation by Tina Calderon.
I'm speaking to God, Creator, the kind, good one. I express my love for you. I am well. I am happy. I count my blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be seated. And we have your report.
Yes. The agenda for the October 11th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 6th, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next up, item three.
Presentations and appointments. The first item is item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, by John Tachtalian.
Yes, Mr. Tachtalian.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Next week's Housing Authority Meeting only has approval of minutes, but we will have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority with one item on the agenda. And that'll be a report from the Community Development Department regarding a program update and future considerations for the monthly housing subsidy program. For the evening meeting, there's a number of consent items. At 4A is gonna be a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding adoption of a motion approving participation in the California Rearridge Payment Program. That'll be followed by a report from Public Works regarding grant funds for the Carl Moyer Program from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. 4C will be a report from the Fire Department regarding acceptance of grant funds for hazardous brush clearance. And at 4D, we'll have a report from Library Arts and Culture regarding acceptance of grant funds for the adult literacy and ESL services. And at 4E will be a final consent item from Community Services and Parks regarding the award of grant funding for our elderly nutrition program. Under action items, we'll have two. The first, I'm sorry, we'll have three. At 8A is Community Development regarding project development team formation to update the citywide bicycle transportation plan, the creation of the Vision Zero policies, and development of an outreach plan. That'll be followed by a Public Works report regarding citywide bicycle detection technology report, and a final report at 8C from Public Works regarding the bicycle facility alternative options for Locker Center Avenue rehabilitation project. And I believe we will have one hearing carried over from tonight over to next week when we have a full council as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item?
Proclamation regarding National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Okay. Does someone have the actual proclamation? Thank you. Duplicate. Two groups. Okay. So I will invite those celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month up, and I will read the proclamations that we have. If there are, I mean, there's plenty of room up there. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna read the proclamations, and I'll invite the two groups, representatives from the two groups, to introduce your members and speak, and then we'll all come down for some photos. And this is the proclamation. Whereas the city of Glendale traces its history back to its days as a Spanish settlement, once belonging to the Verdugo family and part of the colonial New Spain, a land of indigenous and multiracial people, a 36,000-acre area known as Rancho San Rafael that included much of what later became Glendale, Burbank, Montrose, Eagle Rock, La Crescena, Glassell Park, and Sunland Tahunga. When the city of Glendale first came into existence in 1876, it was called Verdugo. And whereas the city of Glendale has embraced and recognizes the benefits and the beauty of cultural diversity, and has become a strong advocate of racial justice and inclusivity of all its residents. And whereas Hispanic heritage holds a special place in the history of Glendale and continues to thrive in the fabric of Glendale through its residents, entrepreneurs, writers, artists, public servants, veterans, engineers, doctors, academics, and leaders in government and labor. And whereas our community has been enriched by vast rhythms of Latino music, a variety of talented artists, the spices of food we enjoy, and laborers from the front lines, such as doctors, nurses, teachers, childcare providers, and laborers that are the backbone of our city. And whereas we are part of a nation with 62.1 million Hispanics, making up 19% of the U.S. population, 20% of Glendale's population, and accounting for $2 trillion in buying power and the largest and fastest-growing ethnic minority, we recognize that America cannot succeed unless Hispanic families succeed. And whereas each year, Americans observe Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the many contributions and the history of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And whereas we are proud of a heritage that includes indigenous, African, Asian, Arab, and European heritage, we are most proud of the humanity that includes a people from Argentina, Belize, Bolivia, Brazil, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Cuba, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, El Salvador, Guatemala, Haiti, Honduras, Jamaica, Mexico, Nicaragua, Panama, Paraguay, Peru, Trinidad and Tobago, Uruguay, Venezuela, and the unincorporated U.S. territory of Puerto Rico. And whereas here we are standing, a proud people that can't be drawn with one fine, "Que viva la America! Que viva Latino Glendale!" Now therefore, and that's the first time I read that, so I don't wanna butcher it. Therefore, I are standing in for the Mayor Ardechess Ardi Kasakian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2022 as National Hispanic Heritage Month. So I invite the representatives to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Miguel Gonzalez. I am a co-sponsor of Adelante Latinos.
Good evening, and my name is Francesca Silva, and I'm also co-sponsor of Adelante Latinos. Adelante Latinos is a volunteer committee within Glendale Unified School District dedicated to the achievement, support, and success of our Hispanic students. Our Glendale Unified School District Hispanic students make up 20% of our student population.
We'd like to present Ms. Chrissy Benitez. She has additional words for us.
Hi, I'm Christine Benitez, the former chairperson of Adelante Latinos. And Dr. Ekjian wanted me to share with you all tonight. She would be here with us in support. But as you know, she has her own meeting that she's running tonight currently. There's a lot of teachers over there at the board meeting tonight, I believe. But I just wanted to thank you all for this recognition. And we've worked in concert with GLA and with Glendale Public Libraries to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month the last three years through a speaker series. And if you get a chance in your not-so-busy lives, check out our YouTube channel. There are just hours of wonderful Glendale citizens who have donated their time to speak to our students about their lives and their story. And I think one of our most recent speakers said to the kids, "If they haven't written your history, write your own." And so many of us have. And it's just very heartwarming for me that we have all of these wonderful people, you know, on record, and we have videos of them, and they will live forever for our students. So thank you very much for recognizing this very important month.
My name is Jenny Quinones Skinner. I'm immediate past president of Glenda Latino Association. I'll let everyone introduce themselves, and I'll say my.
Good evening. I'm Miriam Finkelberg, and I am also a past president of the Glenda Latino Association.
My name is Leila Anderson. I'm also on the board, I'm the secretary.
And Guillermo Garcia, also on the board of Glenda Latino Association. And I hope to see you all on November 5th at the Glenda Central Library for Day of the Dead. Our fifth celebration is gonna be great.
Thank you so much. So Glenda Latino Association, as we all know, has been around for over 30 years. We are a proud, a proud organization in this community, and we look forward to more collaborative work across organizations and cultures. So GLA is an organization made up of diverse members committed to creating educational excellence, civic engagement, and activities that improve and contribute to the lives of Latinos in our community and broader. GLA awards annual scholarships to deserving students. To this date, we've donated up to 260,000 from our members and our scholarship activities, which many of you have all participated in. So we'd like to thank our broader community for supporting those scholarship efforts that help Latino children and students be able to achieve their academic and career goals. And I'm gonna pass it off to our advisory board member, Anita Quinones Cabralian, who helped make this possible.
Okay, thank you. I also would like, well, first of all, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the City Council, members of staff. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I think I started the morning with Councilwoman Asatrian at the Racial Justice Breakfast out in Pasadena, Glendale-Pasadena YWCA, with, I'm sorry, not MAOF, but Astic Awards dancers, and just an incredible speech by Angela Davis. And now here we are, ending the day, receiving a beautiful proclamation from our city of Glendale. And I wanna thank Councilwoman Paula Devine for helping to facilitate this and make this happen, and the staff, especially Mr. Vladimir Sogomonyan, I think is his last name. I also want to call attention to the founder of the Glenda Latino Association. That's your past former council member, Frank Quintero. Without him and a couple of other women, one very Democrat, one very Republican, Glenda Latino Association would not have started. And about 20 years ago, the GUSD Adelante Latinos Committee started. And I'm a proud member of both GLA and Adelante Latinos. And I wanna say that we thank you for helping us celebrate, for helping us commemorate, for helping us acknowledge and recognize the many contributions that Latinos make to the city and to this country. But also, because I think Glendale is a beautiful new city that has embraced diversity and knows the beauty that in diversity, we are stronger. All of us are stronger, you know, standing shoulder to shoulder, whether it's Armenian, Latino, Korean, Filipino, African-American. We are in this together. And Latinos, as the fastest-growing minority in the entire country, you know, we will, we recognize this. Because that's exactly who we are. We are a very diverse people who embrace where we are and wanna become more and actually higher part of each and every community where we live. So with that, I don't know if Frank wants to say anything else, or no? Well, we all say "Adelante Latinos" and "Que viva!" Thank you! Que viva!
Let's go, everyone. Okay, thank you, everyone, and congratulations. Next up, please.
Next are consent items including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Well, I will move the consent calendar. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Thank you. Next up?
Next up is city council and staff comments.
And I will go first to Councilmember Devine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It was a very busy weekend, so I'm just gonna go through these very quickly because there are a lot of people that deserve a congratulations. First, for the Rotary, they did their Community Connection cleanup Saturday. They went down on San Fernando Road, the volunteers, including our city manager, Mr. Galanian, and cleaned up part of San Fernando Road. Lot of volunteers, and I just wanna thank everybody that was associated with that and that helped with that on. I know our Community Services and Parks Department was a big part of it. Forest Lawns, our Optimist was there, Kiwanis, and of course Rotary. And it was the first, since, for many years, we haven't had this go on. So hopefully, next year will be bigger and better and cover more territory, but it was a good success. I also wanted to congratulate Dr. Frida Jordan because she held her 17th Annual Walk of Life for the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry. This group, headed by Frida, Dr. Jordan, I shouldn't call her Frida, Dr. Jordan, they have saved so many lives by starting this registry for bone marrow transplantation in the Armenian community. And then the third event was Faith and Blue, and that involved the Glendale Police Department with the Glendale City Church. It was a lovely event. The clergy and the community that attended thanked our police department. Kept, I'm sorry, interim chief Jenks was there. And it was his first appearance as chief, and he did a very good job of speaking to the congregation that was there. And of course, that evening was the Philippine History Month cultural celebration, huge crowd. It was a lot of fun, a lot of music, food, and it's always good. I have two items that I'd like to have, request a staff report, if possible. Second, first is a report regarding in-home businesses. And I've had inquiries about having, I guess, looking at our ordinance on in-home business. And I understand Burbank, Pasadena have such ordinances. So I'd like to have a, get a second on that, okay? And the second one is, I think we all received a video regarding the traffic and the dangerous situation near Glen Oaks Elementary School, in particular Glen Oaks at Carmel. So I'd like for staff to take a look at that. I think crosswalks there. I know at Ardi White, we did bump outs. We did a, yeah, traffic light. And hopefully, Mr. Galanian, we can look at this location. And, you know, we have to keep the safety of our children as our first priority. So I think, I mentioned this to you, and I think you have an update for us on that.
Good evening. Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine. Mr. Embrani, our Public Works Director, is aware of that particular email and the situation around the Glen Oaks Elementary. He has directed the staff already to look into how we can improve the safety of schoolchildren in that area and neighborhood. So it's in the works.
In the works, okay. Do we have any kind of a timeline or any, or what type of mitigation are you looking at for that particular site?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine. We are looking at similar treatments, as you mentioned, for Ardi White. However, we wanna make sure that we address this issue not just from a traffic engineering. We're also gonna work with the, with the folks at the Glen Oaks, at the elementary school. And then we're hoping to have something within the next few weeks and bring it back before the council.
Next, how many? Two?
Few weeks.
Three weeks?
Probably more like four.
Four weeks, okay. All right, thank you. That's, that's good to know. I also attended this morning the YWCA Racial Justice Breakfast. Again, a huge success. But one of the things that was brought out is that today is the International Day of the Girl. There are 1.1 billion girls in the world, minds of intelligence, hearts of compassion, and lives of potential. So if you know a little girl, if you have a little girl in your life or a young girl, please say something positive to her today. Let her know that you support her and that she can do anything that she wants, as long as she works for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Asatrian.
So I think in addition to all the events that Councilmember Devine mentioned, the one additional one was Imagine Theaters Gala that Councilmember Brotman and I attended. They actually give opportunity for youth in our city and coordinate with the Glendale Unified School District to introduce live theater to our youth, which is extremely important. They have an upcoming production coming up called "On I Heat, the Brave", which will be, I believe, in November. And so I encourage everybody to go on Imagine Theaters' website. Take your children to see live theater. And then Artsakh's Paseo Concert Series has been kicked off for a couple of weeks. So I just wanted to mention that every Saturday at 5:00 PM, there's a live band playing on 222 East Artsakh. So if you're free, please join. And then I have one item that I would like, or I would need a second on. I believe, as I understand it, our health insurance rates for our employees have gone up significantly due to the negotiations that took place through our, through the broker that we use. And so I understand that that contract is gonna be up in 2024, if I'm not mistaken. I'd like for us to see if we can do a new RFP to make sure that our rates are competitive, especially nowadays with, you know, inflation, the way it is. I wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence in getting a firm that's gonna get the best package for us and help our employees. So I'd need, I'd need a second for that.
I'll second.
Do you wanna add anything?
Yes, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Councilmember Asatrian. Yes, that is accurate. The existing contract is going to expire in 2024. Staff had already initiated the conversation to have a new RFP in place. And we do agree with the need for the urgency of this matter. And... And Ms. Adams has reassured me that they'll start working on the RFP as soon as possible with our purchasing agent, and we'll bring it back to council for adoption as soon as possible.
If we can expedite that, that would be appreciated.
We'll try to make it as soon as possible, and we're up against the holidays, but definitely in the next couple of months.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had one thing, and this may be, again, one of these things that staff is already planning on doing, but I'll, I'll put it out. There've been a number of significant housing and housing-related bills passed by the legislature and signed by the governor this year. We know about Laura Friedman's AB 2097, which involves parking minimums, but there's also been a lot of press about AB 2011, which has to do with residential on commercially zoned parcels. And there's a new ADU bill apparently that requires us to permit second-story ADUs over garages. And then there's something called the Solar Access Act, which we've spoken about SB 379, which requires us, I think by next year, to do automated solar permitting. So there's a lot of stuff, and I was hoping that if you're not already planning it, that we could get a discussion on just what are the implications and what are the next steps for us on all of these new bills. Do I need a second for that?
No, council member Brotman, we can, our staff, our housing staff and our legislative staff will bring an update to council for your information.
Or it could be at the Housing Authority meeting if we want.
Or a joint, yeah, joint housing with housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. It was a transportation and transit weekend for me. On Friday, Metro opened the new K Line, and I presided over that with dignitaries from all over the county and the state, actually. The K Line is a north-south line that will eventually, once the LAX People Mover is completed later in 2023, will give a transit ride all the way to Los Angeles International Airport. And we are certainly going to need that when the Olympics and the World Cup rolls into town in the upcoming years. I then flew to Seattle for the American Public Transportation Association and was happy to receive two awards on sustainability. LA Metro got a sustainability award, and Metrolink got a sustainability award for many of the things that I've reported in the past year regarding electrification and alternative biofuels and many other things. And I flew in this morning, and I hit the ground running. That's transportation, too. So here I am and conducting this meeting. So that's all I have. Is there anything from staff at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to turn this mic over to our new community development director for an announcement on our infamous Tech Week coming up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of city council. As acknowledged, our Glendale Tech Week is returning next week. This is always a very exciting initiative for the city, for us to help foster and help grow our tech and entrepreneur spirit. This is a great opportunity for people to engage with founders, with entrepreneurs, with some of the biggest tech companies here in Glendale, and see what some of those creative minds and some of that creative work is doing. On the screen here, you have a number of events that will be coming up. We actually kick off this Saturday with the Makers Fest, but a lot of the events are taking place next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We have a lot of very exciting events in there. The Meet the Funders event is always a very, very popular event for our Tech Week, our Pitch Fest as well. We're also having a Women in Tech panel as well, the Shaping the Next Generation of Women Leaders. That's going to include local women from local tech companies, as well as a representative as well, or a former news anchor, actually, from CNN, who will be participating in that to help moderate that discussion. So we have a number of really exciting events. We encourage everyone, council included, to visit glandaletechweek.com. There's a chance to register for each of these events, and we really hope to see everybody out there.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else from staff? Great. Let's move to item six, which is the community event announcements, Madam Clerk.
We have four speaker cards and one caller.
Okay, let's go to the cards for, from those present. Malcolm Johnson, three minutes.
Hello, as you, my name is Malcolm Johnson. As you know, I'm not Armenian, but I am aware of what's been going on in the Republic, where two weeks ago was the second anniversary of the war in Artsakh. A month ago, we had an attack by Azerbaijan, killing 200-some Armenians, and I know the community is angry. They're angry at the deaths, they're angry, their story not being heard, and they're angry that they still have to protest after all these months of injustice by the Zari government. I would like to suggest to the city, if we can make a makeshift homemade lickety-split memorial wall for the soldiers who have died, particularly soldiers wounded, people who've been displaced, who have connections to the community here. I know that that has happened here in Glendale. I know of one friend of mine who's had a cousin who was wounded in combat. So if you can make, I'm talking copy paper and masking tape, maybe some photos, nothing expensive, just something that if the city had a location that could be protected, that people can come to and express the grief and tell these stories and get these stories out there and let the world know that this has affected not just something 7,000 miles away, but something here in Glendale as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can see if the Arts and Culture Commission wants to assist. I know we have a couple of locations available. I think council is supportive of that. Thank you. Thank you for the idea, Malcolm. Next up is Anne Gavy.
Good evening. I represent Piedmont Park Villa Condominiums and also the Wilshire Manor Verdugo HOA. And we just wanted to let you know some of the problems that had been created by some of the decisions made by the city. I sent a letter to each one of the council members already, but I just want to highlight some of the things that I felt were important. First of all, we were unaware of the change in the trash collection services until we had already made our budget for this year. And our price for trash collection went up from less than $1,000 to $5,485. That's a month. So that's like 500% per month increase, and that's after we had already approved our budget. Interestingly enough, in August 2020, we had asked Athens, because we happen to be under Athens, to give us a bid for our trash collection, and it was approximately $2,000 per month, and that's less, just about a year previous. So we were totally shocked when we got that $5,485 bill. After several meetings this year, we finally gotten it down to $3,600 per month, and we have about half of the previous service that we had before. In last April, we wrote a letter to the city manager, and we felt that the response was more a cookie cutter, telling us how good the program was for the city rather than dealing with our particular individual concerns. During the election campaigns, we heard about how that the trash rollout was very difficult for a lot of people, and we heard Dan Brotman talk about how he was going to be working to lessen the economic impact on the residents of Glendale. So you're hearing some of that economic impact. After only six months, Athens gave itself approximately a 7% increase on top of what we had already had. As of August 31st, with four months to go this year, we have a $27,772 over budget for trash collection this year, and we've had to decrease earthquake protections, we've had to defer maintenance because we can't have a deferred budget like the federal government does, where they just kind of put things off. Also, before 2020, when we had done our budget, we had already increased it for all the monthly fees because we had to pay for the expensive California SB 326 balcony inspection, which has to be done by 2025, and also the increase of construction costs has gone up amazingly. We've already spent $32,000 on the balconies, and we know that there is more to come. In conclusion, we just want you to remember that when you're looking at multifamily dwellings, you are often looking at the individuals who are more likely to be elderly, likely to be on fixed incomes, likely to be disabled than those who are in single-family homes, and we want you to be aware of those and the economic disadvantages. So we will be looking forward very much to your responses to the specific questions that we wrote in the letter and also to helping us know what can lessen the economic impact on our particular community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike Mohell. Okay, I'll go to Stephen Meek.
Good evening, council, Mayor Protem. My name is Stephen Meek. Quick, and I've been doing a lot of trash pickup in our community along with others, and we're noticing cigarette butts are just everywhere, and, but there's no receptacles for them. And I would like to urge the city to start putting these waste receptacles everywhere. Any place that serves food, any place that allows their employees to smoke and throw the cigarette butts out, there's no place to put them, except the streets right now. And I'd like to get staff or somebody working on trying to get these waste receptacles around our city to help clean it up. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meek. Yes, and we have, well, I just wanted to see if Mike Mohell was returning. He is not. And Madam Clerk, we have a call or two?
Yes, there's one caller, Tony Pasarella. Tony, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council and staff, Tony Pasarella. Huge shout out to council member Paula Divine for bringing the Mount Carmel Glen Oaks intersection to the forefront here. An arm, if you would put that photo up there. I'm, I'm the one that started this, and you all got an email from me, and Paul is the only one that responded, Councilmember Divine, but I appreciate that. While that photo's ready to come up, a shout out also to, there it is, to Glendale Fire, they bandaged me up, that's my truck, by the way. September 21st, about 9:30 in the morning, 87-year-old lady came from Mount Carmel. Witnesses say she was going at a decent rate of speed, blew the stop. Witnesses say the truck spun around twice and flipped. I'm suffering, thank God, I'm, I'm not seriously injured, but I'm suffering brain trauma from, from the shock and fright of it all. Two Armenian, strong, young men came and had to pull me out of the top there, the passenger side. And another shout out to the Glendale Police Department for doing a full report, interviewing witnesses, interviewing the other driver, interviewing me. This was a harrowing experience for me. I can't work, my truck, the total loss. And I'm just, I just got to say that, that what, my mind still can't work right. Public Works, Emroni, I'm pleased at what you said, and I'm going to follow up on this. And you said three weeks, I'm going to hold you to that. Usually, you know, you guys know how I roll, you know, you're my history, I usually rail against you, but in this case, I'm, I'm leaving 100% for you because maybe this had to happen to, to put a spotlight on that intersection where children, their drop-off and pick-off are walking with no, with no crosswalk, no crossing guard. And that would be my, my suggestion, and if I could see that, I'd be really pleased. And I'm going to come, I promise you, I will come to city council in person, and I will publicly thank each and every one of you once, once something is done, a crosswalk, a crossguard, with a crossing guard at, at South in Concord, which is two blocks from Temple. So why not, why not there, which is a half a block from Glen Oaks Elementary? I know there's been many, many complaints from parents of residents and even school staff. So please, I'm going to hold you to it, but you won't hear a word from me. The next word you're going to hear, if I see something there, is a thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers?
No other callers.
Okay. That will close this portion of public comment. The next is item seven. Will you please read that into?
Item seven, adoption of ordinances. Community Development Regarding Adoption of Extension of Interim Urgency Ordinance Number 5978, prohibiting issuance of entitlement and/or permits for hotels in the downtown specific plan area of the city, introduced by council member Brotman on September 27, 2022. Ordinance extending for an additional one-year period, interim urgency ordinance number 5978, prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for hotel development projects in the downtown specific plan area.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of city council, as it was read into the record, this item was introduced by council member Brotman a couple of weeks ago on September 27th. We don't have a presentation. Mr. Bradley Calvert, our CDD director, is available if you have any questions.
I have a question. Is, Mr. Calvert, I've since learned that much of staff's work has been completed or is nearing completion on revamping the development standards for the hotels. Are there any hotels in the pipeline that are currently violative of what those standards appear to be that could sneak in and get built before we adopt, before we consider and adopt any of the new development standards for hotels?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Protem, members of city council, we don't have any proposals that we're aware of outside of those that were granted pipeline status by city council.
So there's, okay, thank you for that information. Council member Divine.
And as I understand it, staff is already working on the specifications or the incentives and the other issues regarding the process?
Correct. So the plan was to bring back to city council the proposed or potential alternatives for the modifications to the incentive system, as well as any additional paths in terms of the approval process going forward.
So whether we adopt this extension or not, you are still working on, on that project, and it will not affect anybody, any project right now?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, I've thought about this, and I'm going to be voting against approving this extension because I think staff is working on this, these conditions. And I also think that the report that we got on hotels mentioned that we need high-end hotels. I would hate to think that between now and when this, this year is up, that we have passed or had to pass on a hotel that meets the standards that we're looking for. And I think with the Olympics coming up, and did you mention the World Cup is coming? And I don't know when the, I guess the Super Bowl, is that this year or next year? I'm not sure. But with these big events coming into the area, I think we need to be prepared, and so I'm going to vote against the extension.
Well, yeah, I mean, my view is we should do this right. We started off putting in a moratorium because we wanted to study the issue. We came back, and I thought there was consensus that we were going to let staff finish the job, come back to us with recommendations, and that we wouldn't, even though we're extending the moratorium by a year, we would certainly not need to maintain it any longer than necessary. And if staff is coming back with recommendations, my view would be we let the process play out, and we decide on what we want to do going forward, whether we want to change the incentive structure, we want a CUP, or we want some other arrangement, and then we lift the moratorium at that time. I think that's the proper procedure. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Did you have a comment?
I do. When we discussed this, my understanding was that it was going
When we discussed this, my understanding was that it was going to take the staff three to four months to, to come back. And it was just going to incorporate the discussion that we did have, which was potential for conditional use permit to ensure that we're not allowing by right projects, but being able to get the hotels and the kind of amenities that we want within the hotels. Did I misunderstand something?
Mayor Protem Najarian, Member City Council, Councilmember Sajian. Yes, per, per our discussion at that meeting on September 27th, we estimated a approximately three to four month turnaround for standards.
So I, I would like to keep with our previous decision. That's where I stand on it.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just say, this requires four votes for passage. It, it looks like we're at least one vote short. Maybe, I'm not telling you where I'm at. But I, I do want to say that if we were, if there were to be a motion and it were to fail, what does that do as opposed to taking no action on it today?
Mayor Protem Najarian, so if the council took no action, it could continue it to subsequent meeting when we have a full council. But if the council makes a motion to adopt this ordinance, and for example, it carries quote unquote, three to one, and that, that ordinance will not be adopted because this particular ordinance needs the four votes, at that point, the ordinance would need to, somebody would need to ask for it to come back. At a subsequent meeting, it would need to be introduced again and adopted. But this, the moratorium that you're considering for extension expires next Tuesday, so that will be, you know, that'll be impossible basically to do. So the ordinance will, will on effect, the extension ordinance will be, will be dead, for lack of a better term, because it will not have been adopted within the one-year period.
So, that being said, does anyone want to move this? Are there any calls? Madam Clerk?
There are no calls on this item.
No card, no cards either.
If I might.
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I think it comes down to you and, and Mayor Kasakian, I don't know where he stands, but if you know that you're a no, then we might as well just let it fail right now. If you're not sure, I would, I would propose a motion to just continue it till next week.
Correct.
So let me just put that motion out to continue it to next week, and.
Is there a motion to continue? Is there a second to the motion to continue?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on continuance? Seeing none, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Sajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Mayor Protem Najarian?
Well, if I said no, it would be continued next anyway, by action of a tie on the continuance.
That would unless somebody made, somebody could then make a motion to adopt the ordinance. You'd still, that would still be on the floor for somebody to move it.
Okay, I'm going to create a mess for the mayor and say, no.
No to that motion?
No to continue.
Okay.
So.
Well, we can either, we can either, by operation of law, the ordinance would still come back unless someone makes a motion to adopt it right now, and then that doesn't pass.
Wouldn't the motion to continue be carried to the next week? That's my.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, you're right. Correct.
We'll leave that little present, we'll leave that little present for Mayor Kasakian when he gets back. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Devine, I appreciate you sticking with us. You did ask me for permission for an early excusal, and I know you're not feeling so great, and I will certainly grant that. And I hope you start feeling better.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everyone.
And Mr. City Attorney, eight F is being, well, on my version of the agenda, it's on, but eight F has been continued to next week, correct?
Mr. Mayor Protem, we would ask when we get to that item that it be read into the record and then continued to.
Okay, so we'll take that in order. Okay. Then let's go to eight, the action items, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Action item A, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association on behalf of police sworn managers and resolutions addressing the terms and conditions of said MOU and classification and compensation of affected city employees. One, resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association police sworn managers commencing July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2024. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Management Association memorandum of understanding and GMA exempt classifications. Three, resolution of appropriation in the sum of $125,655 to provide funding for the MOU agreement between the city and Glendale Management Association police sworn managers for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Protem Najarian, Member City Council, I'm going to invite Ms. Paula Adams, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to present this item to you. This would be Ms. Adams's first presentation in front of this council. I'm pretty sure she's done many, many in her previous career.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Najarian and members of the City Council, the item before you are resolutions approving a two-year MOU between the city and the Glendale Management Association on behalf of sworn police management for a period of July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2024, and the classification and compensation of the affected city employees. This agreement covers 14 budgeted positions for, for sworn police managers, holding the ranks of police lieutenant, police captain, and assistant police chief, which is vacant. This MOU is a culmination of several weeks of negotiation between the city and the GMAP. As with other negotiations where the city was engaged recently, the primary concerns brought forward by the GMAP were maintaining a reasonably competitive compensation structure and attracting candidates internally to the position of police lieutenant. And staff believes this proposed MOU agreement provides an appropriate balance of maintaining a fair and competitive compensation structure while, while maintaining fiscal responsibility. In 2020, in what were the early stages of the pandemic, the GMAP came forward with a proposal that contained de minimis cost of living adjustments for that period, and given the uncertainty at that time, that was an appropriate strategy. However, this year, we believe we now have a basis for an agreement that will provide a modest level of adjustment for this group. This proposed two-year MOU contains the following. In year one, a 2% cost of living adjustment effective now. And in year two, a 2.5% cost of living adjustment effective July 1, 2023. For both years, there is an adjustment to a special pay, a special pay category affecting educational pay by $150 per month. A new top salary step, which is not effective until January, until July, excuse me, 2023, will increase the salary range by 4.5%. And the final two elements, just over three hours per month of additional vacation accrual will be added for employees who reach their 20th service year with the City of Glendale, and a deferred compensation match of up to $200 per month for those employees who participate and contribute to the deferred compensation program. Again, after several weeks of negotiation, we are pleased to have this done and to have engaged with reasonable sworn police managers. This item was brought before the GMA sworn police manager membership for a ratification vote and was approved by the membership. At this time, we are asking that the City Council approve this MOU. Additionally, separate and apart from the MOU is a single classification and compensation resolution, which effectuates the proposed agreed-upon compensation adjustments for the GMA represented employees. If approved, the economic terms of the proposed MOU will take effect upon adoption for the November 2, 2022 pay date with no retroactivity. Finally, a resolution for appropriation of funds is also before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. I also want to recognize Captain Robert Williams, who is here tonight and who led his team in a very measured, reasonable, and professional manner, which allowed all of the parties to reach this agreement in a very sensible timeframe and effectively brought these proceedings to a close. Members of the council, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Are there any callers?
There are no callers.
Mr. Brotman?
No, I was just saying, I have no questions.
Would you like to move the?
I'll, I'll move the.
Three resolutions?
Yes, I'll move the three.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Sajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Thank you to all parties involved, Captain Williams and all your team, as well as our city HR staff. Thank you. What's the next item?
Next item is item, action item B, City Treasurer Regarding City of Glendale Investment Policy. One, resolution adopting the city investment policy for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and action item C, which is also City Treasurer Regarding City Treasurer's Annual Review of the City Portfolio, motion accepting report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Protem Najarian, Member City Council, I'd like to introduce Aras Khodabashy with a long title, Treasury and Investment Services Operations Specialist. And this is another first for, for Aras with this presentation on behalf of Rafi Menukyan, who will be available to respond to questions and, and back up if there are any details that are asked by council.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you, City Manager, for making that introduction. I was going to make it, but that's good too. Aras, that's all yours.
Thank you, Rafi. Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, Members of the City Council, residents and staff. Tonight, we're presenting the City Treasurer Annual Report for fiscal year 2021, 2022. There are no changes to the investment policy. At the City Treasurer's Office, we act as the city's banker, and we handle various city daily treasury needs and investment functions. The City Treasurer's Office also acts as the trustee for various city, street improvement bonds. Currently, all street improvement bonds are retired. The city investment philosophy and objectives remain the same. These policies are guided by the prudent investor rule. Investment objectives are preservation of principal, ensuring liquidity, then securing yield. Risk is not tolerated, and our rate of return should at least meet the annual total return on a three-month treasury bill. This slide shows the three portfolios the city currently has, the City Successor Agency and Glendale Redevelopment Agency Bond 2011. The total amount of the portfolio holdings went up from 809 million in 2021 to over 1 billion in 2022. This slide reflects and accounts for the total city investments and cash on hand. The city investments as of June 30, 2022 is 974 million. This is up about 199 million from 775 million at the end of 2021. These two pie charts are asset allocations showing a comparison of our investments where they were in 2021 and where they are now. As you may notice, the pie charts look relatively the same. There is not much changes in the allocations of the assets. This is a graph indicating the ratings of our portfolio over the last couple of years. The yellow bar to the very left represents the ratings as of June 2022. Most of our investments are either AAA or AA, high-grade investments. We continue to enhance the quality of our portfolio by investing in high-grade securities. This is another comparison of the credit ratings from last year to this year. As you may notice, again, majority of our investments are either AAA or AA, which are This slide shows the investment maturities, a chart reflecting how well we manage our liquidity. You will notice about 35% of our assets have a maturity date of less than a year, more than half of which are liquid assets that we can access in less than a day. And the lowest on our priority is yield. This chart shows the quarterly yield to maturity for a three-month, two-year, and a five-year treasury bill in comparison with the city's rate of return. Monthly average yield for the city investment, which is the purple line, meets and exceeds the annual total return on a three-month treasury bill, the red line, for the city's investment objective. Another important point here is that the year coming out of the pandemic, the city portfolio continues to be stable, and it's on its way up. Interest rates are increasing, and we expect higher yields in the future. Year-end key statistics, from June of 2013 to June 2022, our portfolio has increased from 373 million to 974 million. Our interest earnings have also increased from 2.3 million to 11.7 million. Rate of return of our investments has increased from 70 basis points to 174 basis points, and our weighted average maturity has also increased from 21 months to approximately 27, 28 months. Lastly, similar to prior years, we did a benchmark study of the surrounding cities on the rate of return as of June 2022, and we're doing fairly well in comparison to other cities. This concludes my report. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your report. It was very good. Are there any questions? Can you go back to that one slide where you had the interest rate lines? And can you, because I can't really see that, can you tell me the, the yellow and the green line that are taking off so quickly are which, are what items are those?
So the purple line is the city rate of return.
Okay.
The red line on the bottom is the three-month rate of return. This is treasury bill, three-month.
Okay.
And the green is two-year, yellow is five-year treasury bill.
I see. So our trend appears to be going, is this the latest number that you have, end of June 22?
This is as of June 2022, yes.
So you're predicting that that would continue to go up and the same trend, but not at the same rate as the, the five-year and the three bill?
The latest report that we've completed is as of August, and yes, the trend is going up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just one. Could you go to page, it's been a long time, page 11, maybe? Go to the next one. I'm not sure if that's the one. Yeah. So I did notice this, and maybe you could talk to it a little bit. We, we are average, our weighted average maturity now is 27.7 months, which is, obviously, it's a lot higher than it's been over the last couple of years. And I think the explanation that you'll give is, is it's related to COVID and wanting to maintain more liquidity. But even when I look back over the last 10 years, we've never been this extended as far as maturities. And I'm just wondering whether that was an active decision? far as maturities, and I'm just wondering whether that was an active decision to extend our maturities a little because there's some higher yields as you go out, or what went into that?
Mayor Protam Najarian, members of the city council, council member Brotman, a significant impact of the COVID-19 on the financial market was the drastic drop in short-term investment, any, any short-term investments such as money market or any liquid investments. If we look at the investment maturity slide, we noticed that we didn't have much over the, much investments over the last two years, and we started investing more in June, in January of 2022, as the market conditions started to improve, and investment-grade issuers were able to increase the share of the long-term securities. As a result, that increased our weighted average maturity because we're investing, we are investing more, and what we're investing in are in long, mostly are in long-term investments.
Okay, so, but, oh, so you're saying over the last few years, we've had more in cash?
Due to the pandemic, we actually stopped investing for about a year and a half, and Rafi, Mr. Menoukian, you can
And then when you say you stopped investing, meaning you're holding more cash, right?
We were accumulating funds for the pandemic. In case there was an emergency, we had to use actually liquid cash. That's what, we were accumulating the funds for.
But so, but when I look back over 10 years, I don't see a, so there's no, basically, you're saying this is not an active decision
No, no, it's not, yeah.
It's kind of just the outcome of
Of the pandemic, yes.
Maybe the cycling of how we, of
Yes.
Of the bonds we're investing in or something like that?
No, as, as we start investing, we invest in four and five years. We don't invest in two, three years. That's why one of the graphs that you saw, the bar graphs, the two, three years are much less than the four and five-year investments. That's why the, the weighted average is longer at this point.
It's because we held off, and then when we started investing, we're investing in four and five years.
Four and five years, right.
And so we have a bigger chunk of four and five years than we usually do.
As the graph, right, as you can see in the graph right there.
Okay, so as the next couple of years go forward, it's likely that it'll come down a little bit.
Yes, it will.
I got it. Now I understand. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other questions? If not, any phone calls?
If I may, just make a comment. I, I wanted to thank actually Aras Khodabashki for helping me out throughout this process, and she came in yesterday, she had the day off, and she came in and she made the changes to the reports, and I wanted to give her kudos and give her the recognition that she deserves. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
And I'd like to thank you for giving her the opportunity, because I know how important that is. So, thank you.
She certainly deserves it.
Thank you.
Did you come in too, or you just made her come in?
I was already here, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Can we take B and C? Can we go on to C, item C, or take, knock this one out?
I think that was both of them. That was, yeah.
That included the investment policy as well.
Khodabashki read both of them into the record, and then
Okay.
I don't know, there's a separate presentation on the policy itself.
Do you have a, is there any more presentation on the policy itself, or that was included in the
No, everything was included.
So if someone would like to move eight, B and C?
I'll move eight, B and C.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. No calls? Roll call, please.
Council members, as Satrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Mayor Protam Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Next, please.
Next is action item D, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grayson Power Plant Unit Nine Continuous Emission Monitoring System, CEMS Replacement Project. One, Resolution Authorizing an Alternative Procurement Method Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Negotiate and Execute a Design-Build Contract with SEMTech Environmental, Inc., DBA SEMTech, KVB-enertech, SEMTech, or the GPP Unit Nine CEMS Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $530,000. Two, Resolution of Appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Protam Najarian, Member of City Council, here's another first as far as presenters are concerned, and I'd like to introduce Rostamik Chetin, our Mechanical Engineer II with GWP, who's going to present this item for your consideration.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protam Najarian and council members. My name is Rostamik Chetin. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California and a mechanical engineer at the Grayson Power Plant. I'm here tonight to recommend the city council adopt a resolution authorizing an alternative procurement method, designing, dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute a design-build contract with SEMTech for the GPP Unit Nine SIMS Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $530,000, and to adopt a resolution of appropriations to fully fund the project. Project background, as councilors are aware, GWP generates, transmits, and distributes electricity to over 88,000 residential, commercial, and industrial customers in Glendale. Grayson Unit Nine, commissioned in 2004, is Glendale's newest and most reliable local gas turbine generator designed to generate up to 48 megawatts of electricity. City of Glendale relies on Unit Nine for its local dispatchable capacity and support of system stability. The continuous, excuse me, the city of Glendale, yeah, the Continuous Emissions Monitoring System, or SIMS, on Unit Nine, has been in continuous operations since the unit was originally commissioned in 2004. Several of the parts and components of the SIMS are those that were originally installed with the unit. The GPP Unit Nine SIMS is permitted under a Title V air permit and an integral part of the unit providing the necessary feedback to properly report emissions to regulatory agencies such as the South Coast Air Quality Management District, or SC-AQMD, and the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA. The SIMS helps GWP operate the unit in the most environmental responsible way possible. An upgrade or replacement of the system is necessary because the majority of the system is at its end of life. The original equipment manufacturer, OEM, has discontinued their manufacturing, making replacement parts difficult to come by. As such, replacement parts are in low inventory, have to be sourced from outside the U.S., and in our case, from Japan, which have a long lead time, or are essentially no longer available, i.e., obsolete.
Can you just stop for a second?
So we can only operate with a quorum, and Mr. Brotman had to excuse himself, so I'm going to ask you just to pause. No pressure, Mr. Brotman, if you're listening to us.
This is why we need that mic.
We used to have that, yeah, you could monitor the Okay, we can continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we had to take a break because we didn't have a quorum. We had to pause.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, not a, not a big, go ahead, please, thank you.
So the project will be, will design and build an upgraded replacement SIMS and be completed during the Unit Nine separation outage, which is currently scheduled for spring of 2023. The engineer's estimated project cost, including contingency, is 530,000. Photos of existing SIMS, on the left is a photo of the Unit Nine SIMS shelter, where you will see a portion of the sample transport which will be replaced as part of this project. On the right is a photo of the inside of the Unit Nine SIMS shelter, where you will see the analyzers, portion of the same sample transport, the gas conditioning systems, and the data acquisition, reduction, and recording equipment, which will also be replaced as part of the project. Alternative project delivery method, according to Chapter 4.13 of the Glendale Municipal Code, an alternative project delivery method must be authorized by city council before utilized. GWP recommends using the design-build project delivery method rather than the traditional design-bid-build method for the GPP Unit Nine SIMS Replacement Project due to the high level of technical complexity of the project, the time savings that can be achieved using the design-build method, and because the project requires expertise that the city does not possess. Project is technically complex because it includes engineering, procurement, factory build-out programming and testing, construction, integration with existing systems, site testing, commissioning, and training. In order to reduce the impact of data collection, GWP staff must complete the SIMS Replacement Project during the planned spring 2023 Unit Nine separation outage. This requires scheduled acceleration, which the design-build method can provide. The city manager has approved the use of the design-build alternative project delivery method, and a copy of the approval memo is attached to the staff report as an exhibit. Dispensing with competitive bidding. Although Hariba, the existing analyzer manufacturer, offers a replacement, newer replacement model analyzer, SIMS, it no longer has local field service technicians to support GWP in a timely manner. Article 6, Section 9 of the Charter states that upon recommendation of the city manager, the city council may dispense with competitive bidding for any contract when it determines that is in the best interest of the city to do so, and acts by resolution setting forth the reason for such action. SIMTech has installed and continues to service many different analyzers from different manufacturers such as Rosemont, Amatec, Thermo Scientific, ABB, and Teledyne Technologies. SIMS integration is highly specialized work requiring knowledge of current applicable local, state, and federal regulations and permit requirements. SIMTech is a leading local SIMS integrator, having installed many of the SIMS currently in operation in the SC-AQMD, including SIMS for the Pasadena, Burbank, and the Los Angeles Departments of Water and Power. SIMTech employs local technicians, which is necessary to respond, respond to calls within hours. This is critical for GWP, as it will help minimize potential unit downtime. In conclusion, SIMS is required to comply with applicable local, state, and federal regulations and permit conditions. Several of the Unit Nine SIMS components are at their end-of-life, requiring replacement and upgrade. GWP is seeking authorization to single-source the replacement work to SIMTech and to utilize the design-build alternative project delivery method. The design-build alternative project delivery method can deliver the project within the time needed by GWP, and SIMTech, SIMTech has the knowledge and experience to complete this highly specialized work and has the necessary local presence needed by GWP. The project is estimated to cost 530,000. This includes a contingency amount of approximately 7%. Of this 530,000, 260,000 will be funded using existing appropriations, with the remaining amount, or 270,000, to be funded from new appropriations, as is requested in the staff report. With respect to the project timeline, with city council's authorization, our primary focus will be to ensure the replacement SIMS is ready for installation during the spring 2023 Unit Nine separation outage. Recommendations, staff would like to recommend that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the use of the design-build procurement method, dispensing with competitive bidding, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute a contract with SIMTech for the Unit Nine SIMS Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed 530,000, and to adopt a resolution appropriations fully funding the project. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
None for me.
I have a question regarding the SIMS device itself. Is it, does it only record emissions, or does it act like a oxygen, oxygen sensor on a vehicle's exhaust system, where if it detects a, a improper combustion, it sends information to the engine itself that makes adjustments either through oxygen or the fuel input?
Mayor Protam Najarian and council members, the SIMS on Unit Nine only measures, records the emissions out of the unit. The system itself is designed, what you're referring to is like a control system, where it would measure the output and fine-tune maybe the fuel flow to react and be in compliance. The system itself is already designed and tuned to meet emissions. The system on nine only monitors the emissions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any callers?
We don't have callers on this.
Okay, so 9D consists of two resolutions, one of appropriation, one authorizing all the items listed, the dispensing, dispensing of competitive bidding, alternative procurement, et cetera. Is there a motion?
I'll move both.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Council members, as Satrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine? Mayor Protam Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Thank you. Let's move to 8E.
8E, Management Services Regarding Report Regarding Potential Ban on Gas-Powered Lawn and Landscaping Equipment. One, Motion to Note and File Report of a Ban on Gas-Powered Lawn and Landscaping Equipment. Two, Motion Providing Direction Regarding Next Steps on Consideration of Ban on Gas-Powered Lawn and Landscaping Equipment.
Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Protam Najarian, Member of City Council, I'm going to invite Elizabeth Harris, our administrative associate with our Sustainability Office. David Jones is also available for questions and answers, and this item is presented to you in response to Councilmember Brotman's request.
Thank you. Hello, council and Mayor Protam. So what I bring to you today is a presentation to review considerations of a ban on gas-powered lawn and landscaping equipment, and today we're coming to you for direction on whether or not council would like to pursue a ban, and if so, how. So what I will do through our presentation is I will take you through an overview of the related legislation, what some cities are doing, and if you do pursue a ban, what are some of the considerations of a ban. So first off, I'll start with California Assembly Bill Number 1346, or AB 1346, and this is a piece of legislation that was recently passed that bans the sale of gas-powered small off-road engines by 2024. Small off-road engines, also known as SOARS, are spark ignition engines with a rated of less than or equal to 9 kilowatts. So these are the types of engines that you'll see in some airport equipment, golf carts, and most commonly in lawn and landscaping equipment, such as leaf blowers, lawn mowers, and like trimmers. There's a slight error in the presentation, but as of December 2021, the California Air Resources Board, or CARB, updated its regulation so that, that they will ban the sale of gas-powered off-road, gas-powered SOARS by 2024, and any models from 2024 and onward have to be zero emission or electric. Also, as part of AB 1346, there is also an allocation of $30 million for incentives and rebates to help with the transition towards electric equipment. So why was this ban on SOARS brought up? Well, one of the areas is noise. Many cities do regulate the use of leaf blowers, for instance, as part of the noise ordinance, and to only be used during certain hours. These machines have very high noise levels, produce a lot of sound. You see many operators have ear protection. But also, another reason why is that these engines are highly polluting. If you take a look at the graphic from CARB, it kind of shows that running these types of engines, like in a lawnmower, leaf blower, is far more polluting than driving a gas-powered Toyota Camry hundreds of miles. But additionally, because these engines produce a lot of oxygen, oxides of nitrogen, reactive organic gases in particular matter, not to mention they blow up a lot of dust and allergens in use, along with the noise, it does have health impacts on operators, such as like hearing loss over extended years of use, and also concerns of accelerating asthma and other like respiratory illnesses and allergies. and other like respiratory illnesses and allergies. So what have other cities done in regards to regulating the such type of equipment? So typically what we see is that cities have banned gas leaf blowers. Cities like Berkeley, West Hollywood, Pasadena and South Pasadena have banned the use of such equipment. And then you have a few cities who tend to ban all leaf blowers, like Laguna Beach, Santa Monica and the city of Del Mar. What you typically see in many cities and regarding the SOARs is that they tend to regulate the use of leaf blowers if they do provide any regulation. But we don't typically see regulation of all SOARs or gas powered SOARs. And in doing some of this initial research, we did speak to colleagues at West Hollywood. We spoke to someone at South Pasadena. And we also spoke to the county, because going to the next slide, there are counties that are looking to implement certain bans on all gas powered SOARs and gas powered lawn and landscaping equipment. So for instance, the city and county of San Francisco introduced their Healthier, Cleaner and Quieter Communities Acts, which will ban the use of gas powered landscaping equipment in their city facilities by twenty twenty-four and then everywhere else by twenty twenty-six. This is currently would be one of the most progressive and aggressive forms of legislation in the state in regards to regulating the use of gas powered lawn and landscaping equipment. And then closer to home, in L A County, we spoke to the county as recently they were introducing a ban on gas powered leaf blowers. But when speaking to staff, they're investigating potentially expanding that to all gas powered SOARs or gas powered lawn and landscaping equipment within the county. So currently, they're still in the earlier investigation stages. But if they do pursue that route of banning all kind of gas powered lawn and landscaping equipment, they too would be also be very progressive. But to make a note is that if whatever ban the L A County does pass, it would only affect unincorporated communities. So Glendale wouldn't necessarily come under that scope.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just back on your, on the previous slide, it's, so when you say cities that have banned all leaf blowers, so they're not allowing electric leaf blowers either.
Correct.
Basically, you have to rake, right? And it mentions Laguna Beach. And I see one member of our audience who spends a lot of time in Laguna Beach. But I'm curious whether we've talked to them. I mean, are they able to enforce this?
We haven't spoken to these cities, but as I was going to speak to further along in the presentation, from speaking to the cities we have and from some other reports, enforcement has generally been a challenge overall.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard, I mean, L A's had a leaf blower ban, a gas leaf blower ban forever, for decades. And I don't think anybody pays attention to it. I also heard Santa Monica, somebody sent me like something from an article that showed that, I guess they went through like a spate of citations. They issued a whole bunch of citations. But I've heard from other people that it's kind of been a disaster, that they're really, nobody's really been successful at enforcing these bans. So maybe something to look into as we go along, like, you know, how we do this. All right, thanks.
So continuing, so regarding bad considerations, as I was about to speak about, enforcement has been definitely a challenge as Councilmember Brodmann mentioned. There are challenges and questions regarding like, how is the ban enforced? Is it like a citation as part of the noise ordinance? Is it zoning municipal code? Who enforces the ordinance? Is it a code enforcement officer or is it a police officer? What are the enforcement resources? That's also another challenge, like how many resources do you allocate? How much of their time? If a ban is considered and council does want to have sort of citation type enforcement, we staff would definitely need to lurk and look into what are the resources necessary? For instance, West Hollywood, they have allocated like one person to look into specifically about leaf blowers. Another consideration of enforcement is who is penalized? Is it the user of the equipment or is it the entity that commissions the work? What we've seen in like cities like South Pasadena, they tend to find the entity that commissions the work. So not necessarily the landscaper, but perhaps the household or residency or business that hires the landscaper to do the work. Alternatively, council could also consider perhaps not having enforcement. So for instance, South Pasadena, they have their ban on gas powered leaf blowers, but they're currently not enforcing it in terms of like having citation officers out there. What they're focusing more is on education and outreach and trying to educate and show ways that which organizations and individuals can switch. The county, when speaking with staff, they were also looking into how could we incentivize the use perhaps more than like regulate it through citation? So that's another consideration. And then as businesses and organizations transition, there's also the challenges of business transition. So our Parks Department has been working for years on transitioning their teams and their landscaping equipment to electric. And they've already been able to convert all the mini parks and all handheld landscaping equipment will be transitioned to electric by the end of the year. So they have pretty much been able to electrify much of the park system. And from speaking with them about their experiences as well as their experiences of working with other organizations and speaking to them, they, these were some of the insights they had in regarding to transitioning to electric landscaping equipment. For organizations that have lots of equipment and need lots of batteries and such, there needs to be considerations on the business organization establishing proper infrastructure for charging and storing such the equipment. This equipment, well, if you have a big landscaping business with lots of pieces of equipment, you have to charge the equipment, plus you're likely to have extra batteries on hand just in case your initial piece of equipment is starting to run low. So you also make sure that you have space to charge those extra batteries, space to charge any current equipment. And also, if you have a lot of battery charging, you need to maybe consider ventilation and if perhaps the fire code and that whatever facilities you have can handle the additional load. But for most residences or smaller entities, this will probably not likely be as big of a hurdle for them. But definitely, they would need to consider do they have space or access toilets to charge their equipment? And speaking of equipment, there's also a challenge in transition to purchasing this equipment. Not only do they have to purchase the electric equipment, but there's also purchasing additional batteries. And currently, though A B thirteen forty-six did allocate thirty million dollars, this money would likely be allocated through the local air quality district. So for us, it'd be the South Coast District. And currently.
If I might, yeah, actually, no, it was decided it's going to go through CARB, not the air district.
CARB, okay. Okay, so it will be recently distributed through CARB. When checking their website in terms of available incentives, they were referencing local air quality districts. So whatever incentives that CARB will distribute has not been currently been available or is not identified as being available. But still, doesn't mean that the city could offer incentives and rebates if they choose to. Cities like Sammatt Tail and Redwood City have allocated, have created rebate and incentive programs for the city. And then another area is like training of staffs. And not only do you have to need to learn how to use this new equipment, but also there's consideration of staff learning how to effectively and efficiently use this equipment. So for instance, if they use a leaf blower at a higher power, they may be able to complete their job faster, but then the battery runs out faster. So there's that balance. And then another consideration is if council does want to pursue a ban, how much of a transition period do you want to give to organizations? What we've seen in some legislation is that cities usually take a couple of years to transition their facilities. And then after their facilities are transitioned, they have another two years in which other organizations, businesses and entities can transition. Since our facilities are more or less transitioned, council consider how long, what length do you want to give? Do you want to give like four years, which is what we typically see? Or do you want to give less or more? And then speaking of technology, there is also in terms of other considerations of technology recycling. So most of the handheld and commonly used equipment, like leaf blowers, push lawnmowers and trimmers, there are electric alternatives available. And doing some initial look, they tend to be less expensive than the gas versions on average. So that is electric available options there. In terms of like, if you have equipment that is less frequently used, so like really big lawn mowers that have like a width like ten feet plus or like saw cutters that are more occasionally used, finding electric alternatives are more difficult or currently not available. But this also tends to be equipment that is least frequently, less often used. Manufacturers usually offer warranties between one to five years. And in terms of battery recycling, which should be as a consideration for this, some manufacturers will take back the batteries for recycling. Many of the manufacturers that I looked at tend to reference local recycling facilities. And currently in Glendale, we have our hazardous waste site, which both residents and can recycle and bring batteries as well as businesses can make an account to recycle batteries. And then the county has about three to four centers that are where businesses can come and recycle their batteries. And lastly, if council does want to pursue a ban, another consideration is the type and scope of ban. The type of ban could be the ban on the sale, although CARB has already, well, the state and CARB will already ban the sale by twenty twenty-four. Alternatively, there's also the ban on the use, which is what we see cities regarding this issue. And then if you do want to pursue a ban, what's the scope of the ban? So most cities we've seen typically bans focusing solely on gas powered leaf blowers. But do you want to have a ban that encompasses all gas powered SOARs? So for our ask for city councils to provide feedback and note and file this report and also to provide direction on whether or not staff should investigate any type of ban on gas powered SOARs and landscaping equipment. If city council wants to pursue a ban, provide direction on the type of ban and scope. And if city council does want to pursue that, our next steps will be staff to begin drafting an ordinance. We will connect with cities with similar bans about their ordinances and experiences. We'll definitely do, we will also conduct community outreach for affected groups like residents and different landscaping businesses and other organizations with landscaping needs. And we'll explore any of council's recommendations. And that is the end of my presentation. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have some callers and some cards. Would council like some time to ask questions at this point? Or would you like to hold off until public chimes in? Let's go to the public and let's start with those that are present and have submitted cards. Catherine Yurka.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. For the twenty twenty candidate forum, the Verdugo Woodlands West H O A asked all of the candidates if they would support a ban on gas powered leaf blowers. Every candidate said yes without hesitation. I'm really sad that only one of them is here tonight. This is before your, no, just you and Artie and Paula. Oh, sorry, Mayor Kasakian and Councilmember Devine. I'm here to beg you please to support a ban on the use of gas powered, leaf blowers in particular, but also SOARs, which is a really kind of appropriate and unfortunate name. They are bad for workers, they're bad for residents, and they are very bad for the environment, not just in the way you saw in terms of emissions, but also for the, for trees and for what they do to landscaping environments. And I think that even though this would be a prohibition, it's also really a chance to rethink our expectations around garden labor and to measure it not perhaps by the eradication of every particle of dirt and all leaf matter, but to think about asking gardeners to measure their work in terms of time. And we, I'm not, I don't have this great nostalgia about a rake and a broom, although I do use them occasionally. But we just asked our wonderful gardener to use them and just do as much as he can in a reasonable amount of time and then, you know, carry on someplace else the following week. It really is possible. And our group, the H O A, would certainly work hard to educate residents and members about expectations and about the policy. And if they weren't willing to change their expectations, they could just go ahead and buy electric blowers. I, I do think that there is benefit to having a period of education, I mean, ongoing education before you have penalties and citations. But I do think to get people to comply, that there needs to be some kind of promise of enforcement. So anyway, I really thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next is Joanna Pringle.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Joanna Pringle and I'm here representing Glendale Environmental Coalition. We urge you strongly to ban gas blowers. If you have any doubt about how horrible these machines are, try one for yourself. You'll be engulfed in a cloud of foul exhaust and endure ear splitting noise. There's no catalytic converters on these leaf blowers. The particulate matter from the heavy two-stroke engine on your back is planting the seeds of lung cancer, heart disease, strokes, asthma and other chronic afflictions. Imagine being a landscape worker, breathing that for hours a day, day in, day out. When you're not using a leaf blower, you're using a gas lawnmower, a gas weed whacker emitting the same toxic mix of gas and oil. In fact, gas hedge trimmers are the worst offenders. Glendale Environmental Coalition stands for environmental justice for everyone. It is immoral to make workers subsidize the cost of our landscaping with their health. And they're not the only ones at risk, of course. The equipment is a significant polluter of everyone's air. How often have you walked outside and smelled the noxious odor of a leaf blower from two or three houses down? We urge you to be innovative. For years now, the A Q M D has been offering rebates of up to seventy-five percent of electric equipment to landscapers replacing gas machines. We've talked to commercial gardeners about the program and they're actually eager to switch to electric, not only because of their health, but because of the price of gas now. They also know that electric equipment is now as effective as gas equipment for their jobs. And they, but they say it's not that simple. They don't have cash reserves to front the cost of new equipment, as you explained. They worry about the paperwork and the delay involved in getting discounts through rebates or whether they'll actually even receive the rebates at all. So could Glendale work with the A Q M D to make this a more practical program? Could the A Q M D maybe take a modest deposit from the gardeners, obtain the rebates and then charge the gardeners for the balance of the cost when they pick up the equipment? Last year, smog forming emissions from small vehicles, sorry, small engines in California surpassed those from passenger vehicles. Please, it's time to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Meek.
Good evening, council members, Protem mayor, staff. I just want you to urge staff to move forward on this ban or potential ban and do some more investigating. We all know the smells and everything else. The two speakers that came before me were much more eloquent than I could be. But we should move ahead, keep Glendale a very progressive community. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's go to the callers.
Our, our first caller is Rick Stem. Rick, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Rick Stern. I live in Glendale. And I'm calling in favor of a ban on the small gas powered tools. Such a ban would be, converting to electric tools would be benefits to homeowners. The tools would of course be much more quieter and they wouldn't have the very heavy noise pollution. I know that on my street, the noise from the gardening worker to our house and the four houses that surround us is heard, can be heard through the double, our double pane windows all the way and can be heard all the way down the street. It would be a benefit to the workers themselves also because it would be lighter, less vibration, quieter, less pollution, and that would bring on less fatigue. And the A Q M D is of course giving rebates for trading in their gas tools for electric. I'd also like to seek Glendale help with the transition to support a certification course, which is given by the American Green Zone Alliance, A G Z. The course will give proficiency with battery and electric technology, you know, how to operate it, how to maintain it, how to safety practices with it. And also, I'd like to mention that some houses like mine have outdoor outlets and that would give the gardeners the opportunity for charging some of their batteries while they were working our land so that they wouldn't have to carry so many batteries. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you. Our next caller is Paul Beryl-Zheimer. Paul, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm sorry I couldn't join you today this evening. I had hoped to, as this is an issue that means a lot to me and that I've been advocating for, for years. But I'm swamped with work right now. I couldn't get away from my desk. I'm very glad that you're considering restricting or banning gas-powered lawn and garden equipment and leaf blowers. I'd like to encourage you to support the strongest measures possible to end their operation here as quickly as possible. When I refer to blowers, I mean all leaf blowers, usually powered by gas, electricity, steam, hamsters, well. Getting rid of blowers' gas engines helps, of course, but it only addresses half of the problem. The blowing itself is the other half. Blowers kick up into the air clouds to find particulate pollution, find particulate pollution consisting of pesticides, herbicides, brake dust, mold spores, pollen, animal DCs, and just much more that negatively affects everybody's health and especially make life miserable for allergy sufferers and sufferers of other respiratory diseases. Here in Southern California, we don't really have a dense leaf canopy that creates huge piles of leaves that are difficult to move around. Most of the time, we see leaf blowers being used just to move around small amounts of leaves that could just as easily and just as quickly be gathered with rakes and brooms. I grew up in Evanston, Illinois, in the 60s and 70s, a city that has been designated as a Tree City USA. It has a beautiful, citywide, dense canopy of deciduous trees, big-leaf oaks, maples, elms, and the like. It's a beautiful city, and the lawns and gardens were always kept immaculate long before there was any such thing as a leaf blower. Even there, they are really unnecessary. Over 100 towns and cities across the US have banned leaf blowers, and many are in the process of banning gas-powered gardening equipment. I hope that we in Glendale can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jackie Echo. Jackie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, speaking on this issue. So according to ABC 10, state officials say using one gas leaf blower for one hour emits the same amount of pollution as driving from LA to Denver, Colorado. I have asthma. Anything under 50, you know, measured air, is considered good air, anything under 50. Lately, I'm waking up to 130 AQI. I can't open my windows. This is a very poor quality of life in one of the greatest cities in the world. We, we are better than this. We can figure this out. We can make a healthier city for everybody here. I have a lot of compassion for landscapers and gardeners, and I truly am on board, and I feel strongly that we need to use our tax dollars to help them financially incentivize and transition to clean alternatives that also enable them to make the same amount of money, if not more, money. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next caller is Monica Campania. Monica, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, council members. Good evening. I'm just calling to add on to what the previous callers have already said with a few extra points. I do support a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. I don't know how far you want to take it, if you want to go to a full ban on blowers, but at least gas blowers. Just a few things. One is, there's definitely a demand for green gardeners these days. So it is actually a perk if you can offer a service that doesn't involve gas. I also wanted to suggest, if we do move forward with the ban, that we have plenty of time for education and a transition, and that perhaps the city could work with American Green Zone Alliance to have some, and the AQMD to have some special, maybe four events where people can bring in and exchange their equipment for electric and get some lessons on the battery usage and how to take care of those, that equipment. And not just, you know, have them have to go get the rebates through the website, but also to have these live, live events. I think that would be really nice. And we could also have our Parks Department involved since they're already transitioning themselves. Maybe they can come and show some of their equipment. And just that we, we can do this. We can join Pasadena, South Pasadena, LA, and have a more unified front as a community working towards getting rid of these horrible things that are so bad for the workers and for the community. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Our final caller is Edwin. Edwin, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Hi. So I hear you guys are talking about banning gas lawn equipment. Now, here's the question that I'm always asking myself. The question that I'm concerned about, that I like to ask about is, now, if we ban gas-powered lawn equipment, that question is, you guys can do that, but the problem is that this policy is creating a monopoly, a monopoly that says that only, electric only. And that right there can turn into a legal challenge in the legal system where, as you can see, similar to Gavin Newsom saying, "We're going to ban gasoline car sales by the year 2035," the problem is that it's a monopoly. That's the concern that I have. Now, the concern that I have is, are these companies who produce gas-powered lawn equipment, are they going to turn around and sue all the cities for creating this monopoly? That's the question that you guys should be asking regarding putting this ordinance in forward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we don't have any other callers.
Thank you. Mr. Galan, you're looking for direction, is that correct?
Yes, mister. We either, council can, can choose to note and file, or provide comments, feedback, and direction to staff.
Well, let's talk about it. Mr. Rotman.
Okay. I kind of have a lot of stuff, though. Because I, I've been thinking about this and advocating for this for a long time and was really happy that our Parks Department, you know, picked this up very eagerly and went through a transition first, I think, in eight parks, and then extended it to all the parks. And I guess by the end of this calendar year, I'm told, that all of the handheld equipment used in parks will be, will be electric. And that's really tremendous that we're, we're doing that. And I think the strategy there that we all agreed on at the time was, you know, we want to walk the walk, right? We want to show that it can be done, and it can be done cost-effectively, and we wanted to be able to, you know, provide our own testimonials. So I think we did it the right way, by doing it ourselves first. Now, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I definitely want to move forward with a strong ban. But I don't want a ban the way some other cities have done it, like LA, like Santa Monica, and most of the cities that I've heard about. Maybe there's some exceptions. They've put something on the books, everybody feels good, they pat themselves on the back, but nothing really changes. So I want to make sure that we bite off, you know, no more than we can chew, that we do it, and we do it really, you know, thoughtfully. And I think that that gets into the implementation and the kind of education and rebates and everything that we have to do. So anyway, that's kind of general comments, but then I want to, and let me say, you know, I agree with Paul Beryl-Zheimer who called in, and he's said this to me many times over the years, you know, "Let's get rid of all blowers and go back to raking." And it's true, like, I grew up, you know, on the East Coast, and we had no blowers. We had, we raked, right? But I just, again, it's, it's, let's not bite off more than we can chew. I think it would be good for us to do, first thing first, which is electric equipment. We can then look at where we want to go after that subsequently. That's kind of where I am. I, I agree with him, though. So, and I would also say about, I mean, I think this helps the gardeners a lot, because I think if one gardener decides to do electric, you know, I mean, I think the reality is the electric blowers are not quite as strong as the gas blowers. So it does take a little longer if you're using electric. So it puts them at a competitive disadvantage. It's hard for somebody to just do it themselves, but if everybody is doing it, then, you know, we have an even, even playing field. So just some preliminary comments. As far as the ordinance itself, my recommendations, if, if my colleagues, you know, agree, would be certainly to cover all two-stroke engines. And that would mean, I think, all blowers out there on the market are two-stroke. I may be wrong, but I think they are. That would include the weed whackers and the hedge trimmers. I believe they're all two-stroke. There may be some other small devices that are. Some of the mowers, I've been told, are, the bigger mowers are four-stroke, and there isn't as much compet, there aren't as many manufacturers making them, so that, so the, the prices are pretty high. So I would say maybe in the initial phase, we focus on two-stroke, not four-stroke. That would be my recommendation on that. I think that we might want to focus on routine maintenance and not kind of these special seasonal jobs, because there's some special equipment. But maybe staff can look into that. Like, do we want to, we want to, certainly, we want to do, you know, the regular weekly maintenance, but there could be special jobs that are going to be just difficult to do. So something maybe to come back to us with a little more information on. I think a one-year grace until we start, you know, like, citation enforcement should be enough for the larger garden companies, gardening companies. Anybody that's doing large, you know, have, have more, I think that, I think the definition is, in the state, you know, rebates is like, if you have more than two trucks and more than six employees, you're considered large. So I think those larger operators, I'm told, you know, a year is a reasonable amount of time. For the mom and pop, the ones that have, you know, one truck, and maybe it's just two people or three people, we might want to consider giving them maybe a second year. Okay, so I'll put that out there as a possibility. Citations, I, I like the way South Pasadena is planning to do it. I don't think they've implemented their ban yet, by the way. They're waiting for these state vouchers to come down, which I want to mention in a minute. But their idea is that they will, the citation doesn't go to the gardener, the citation goes to the, the property owner or whoever is hiring the gardener. And I think that's probably appropriate. And also that way, we're, you know, if we're giving citations, they're going to be to Glendaleans, you know, who are hiring these gardeners. So that's what I would say. That's on the ordinance. And if I could just continue, on the implementation, one thing that I learned about is, is that 30 million from the state is coming as a voucher program. It's going to come through CARB, and it's not going to be a rebate. It's going to be a point-of-sale. So you don't have to, like, turn in your old one and wait to get the check in the mail. You actually go to the dealer, and they're just going to sell it to you at that discounted price. The problem with that is apparently, you know, that money is going to go really fast. So it, it would be good for us, even ahead of having an ordinance in place, to see if we can start organizing maybe some outreach where we bring, and this is an idea that came from AGZA, Dan May at AGZA, who's, you know, been in here before and spoken to us, and he was the one that's been working with Parks. But anyway, what, what he suggested is, you know, you can get the dealers or the manufacturers to actually come to an event, and you get people to come, you know, that are in the gardening business, and you do, you do some of the education, and they can get the equipment right then and there. And we should jump on that, because apparently that money, for the first 90 days, is going to be limited to mom and pops, but after that, they're going to open it up, and it's probably going to go really fast. So, and the expectation is that program will kind of launch either at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So I would encourage us to kind of start thinking about how we can get ahead of, you know, even having an ordinance in place and start giving opportunities for people to access that. And then after that, we might need to be, you know, like lobbying our assembly member and state senator to get another chunk of money, or maybe considering ourselves putting something in, in the budget, maybe at Measure S would probably be an appropriate thing to do. So those are my main points. So bottom line, I would like us to start preparing the ordinance, but also maybe working on some training and outreach. And, and as far as enforcement goes, like, I think we're going to have to do both. I think if we just lead with enforcement, we'll fail. I think if we don't do any citations and we just do the education, we'll fail. So I think it's really going to be a combination of the two. And what I'm told is that the education is really important, because if gardeners are using these tools exactly the same way they use gas, they're going to need lots of batteries, and it's going to be really expensive. And, and I think, Elizabeth, you said something about that, like, they can use them on different power settings. But also, it is, it, it's, I think Kathy was right, what she said, it's, it's a lot about expectations of residents, because, you know, the way to, the, the best way to do it, the most efficient way would be, you blow debris onto the lawn, and then you mow it and mulch it in. You don't try to make everything so perfectly pristine and get rid of every leaf on your lawn, right? If you're doing that, if we continue to do that, we'll probably fail. But if we, if we kind of start to change the mindset about what is appropriate gardening, maybe we can get there. So, sorry, I had, it was a lot, but I kind of wanted to go through my, my thoughts, which I've been, I've been developing over the last few years on this, and, and I really want us to have a program that works, not just looks good.
Thank you. Councilmember.
I have a question. How long did it take for our Parks Department to implement this?
I'm not certain about the exact time, but I believe at least three years.
You know, I think it's less.
Correct. It's been, it's actually been a little less than that. It's been a little under two years, but we're not fully implemented just yet. We've done most, all of our mini parks. We're moving towards our larger parks towards the end of the year. We're also waiting for that lump of, that, that, that large amount of cash infusion from the, is it CARB or AQMD, one or the other, to help us get over the, the next phase of purchasing the rest of our equipment to offset some of the expenses.
So I'm, I'm in support of banning the gas leaf blowers. I think, I think we should start there. I do want to make sure that whatever we come out with, hand-in-hand is the incentive program. So I wouldn't be okay with it if it did not have an incentive program, a buyback program, a trade-in program that helps these businesses. For us to try to expedite this, to try to enforce it within a year without providing the necessary financial tools to individuals that use this to put bread on their table is just unacceptable to me. So I would want to see something that you guys come back with that's hand-in-hand with that. And then with respect to the citations, I don't know how this would work, but like, whoever owns the property, and not the property as in the house, but the property as in, like, the leaf blower or whatever they're, or the, or the mower that they're using, right? So if it's, if it's the person that owns the home, that owns it, whoever purchased it, right? So I don't think it's fair to cite, give out a citation to somebody that is not even aware that maybe there's a gas leaf blower being used in their home because they are hiring a certain service, but the equipment isn't theirs. To put that on the, on the resident, I think, is, I don't know if that, that's possible to do, but, but for me, that would be whoever purchases the equipment, if that's doable. That's all I got. And I had no idea that it would, I mean, I have, so Fridays are not happy days for me, because I wake up to the sound of leaf blowers right under my balcony and the dirt that blows up into my balcony, which that needs to be cleaned out. So I, but I had no idea that the kind of emissions- emissions we're talking about from that are from here to Denver. So thanks for sharing that and educating us.
Can I comment on that last point before, or do you want to go first?
Which point?
Just the point about who gets cited.
The due process issue. I have a problem with that. But I don't want to start there. I'll let you, I'll let you go.
Yeah, all I wanted to say is, you know, if I'm hiring a gardener, it's up to me to make sure that that gardener is using the right type of equipment. I mean, that's my responsibility. That's how I see it. You don't hire somebody and you don't know what they're doing. I mean, that would be kind of weird.
I, I mean, I'm.
Anyway, that's. Let me, let me, let me get through. That's all I want to say. Okay. Look, everyone hates those leaf blowers, the noise, the pollution, the dust. It's very, it's very intrusive and very disturbing. So let's get that out of the way. Nobody loves that. The question is, how do we transition to alleviate those problems? You know, I see a couple, couple issues with a blanket ban on the soars. I think whatever we talk about has to be very narrowly crafted, maybe only to leaf blowers. Because there are soars by definition. Generators, several manufacturers make gas-powered two-stroke generators. So when the big earthquake hits, or we have a blackout, you can keep your, your critical electrical functions going. So I don't want to cover, let's not make it so broad as to do that. Chainsaws, how far are we going to extend this? To chainsaws? Are we going to extend it to pressure washers? Every week on Bram Boulevard, there are two-stroke engines, and they're cleaning the filth and the garbage off Bram Boulevard with pressure, pressure washing. Are we going to say you can't do that anymore? Well, you can't get a rake. A rake isn't going to take the gum off the sidewalk or the filth and the other stuff. And they keep Bram exceptionally clean. And there are other, you know, there are other examples. But I think we've got to be very, very narrow in our definition. Enforcement, are we going to have a complaint-driven system where a neighbor is going to call a hotline or the police and say, my neighbor has a gardener that's using a gas-powered leaf blower? I think that's a system that we're, we're setting up to do. I don't like that at all, though. I think that's a, I think that's very bad. That leads to a lot of divisiveness. And it still begs the question, even if you call in, I mean, we have so many other issues to deal with in this city, crime issues, is the police going to find, make it a priority to go and, I mean, we're talking about Glen Oaks, children's safety. Are we going to, you know, are we going to say, well, there's a gas blower, gas leaf blower, you know, on, you know, Verdugo, or they need me to go and do some patrol at the school? It's tough. I don't think the police are going to put this as a priority. I don't think they're going to want to put it as a priority. And when they get there, what are they going to do? They're going to ask the, even if he's in the act, they're going to then give a citation to the homeowner, and the homeowner's going to say, I had no idea. And I think there are severe due process implications in that. I don't think you can create a law like that that imposes upon an unknowing property owner what was done by a contractor, by an independent contractor. And even if you sign an agreement, yes, you know, you know, Smith's Gardening Service is only going to use electric-powered tools. But let's say Smith's Gardening Service has a battery problem, and he goes with a gas-powered tool. And they knock on my door and say, here's your citation, Mr. Najarian. And I say, wait a minute, here's my agreement with Smith Gardening. There's no court in the world that's going to convict a homeowner over that. So let's not get too far, you know, over the skis on this. South Pasadena doesn't force it at all. I think we've got to move this along as a state. We need to move with the, the state legislature and starting with the ban on the sale, and eventually, these products are going to start falling out of favor. And as they start to deteriorate and wear out. I don't know how else we can do it. I really don't. These are gardeners that move from city to city, in unincorporated areas to incorporated areas. And I don't think they're going to pay attention to a Glendale rule because they can go all these other places where either there is no rule or the rules aren't enforced. So we all hate the noise, the pollution, the dust, clearly. But we, I think we have to think this out. I'm also concerned about Smith Gardening Service that may not be able to afford the electric, who may have to work longer, who may have to cut staff back. I think we need to do outreach to the industry, the, whether it's the landscaping industry, I don't know what they call it, the gardener's industry. We need to speak to them and understand what it means if we place a limit. If it takes longer to do a home because you're using a lower-powered electrical, are the workers now going to be working instead of eight-hour days, are going to be working 10-hour days or 11-hour days? These are all things that are consequences of the actions we take. Let's investigate it. Let's get an understanding of what the true consequences are, and then let's move forward. That's, that's what I think. So, I don't know, we can follow up.
That's what we're planning on doing today.
Yeah.
So today, there's no, there's no.
Well, did we say we're going to reach out to the trade organizations?
That's what Elizabeth said.
Did we? Do you have the name of the trade organizations?
Not at the moment, but we have started building a list of local landscapers.
But no one was talking about the impact on the small business owner that might go out of business, whose workers may be forced to work longer hours. Equity, let's talk about equity in this whole thing. And equity for the small business owner. We talked about it. I'm not saying these are issues that you didn't raise, but these are issues that are important to me. So, and I want the public to know that, too. I hate that noise. I hate that smell. Believe me. I can hear a leaf blower across the Verdugo Woodlands Canyon from two miles away, and it really bugs me. But let's do this methodically. Let's limit the scope, I think. I don't think we can have a broad ban on the soars. Did you call them soars? Is that the name of it? On soars, because there are so many other types of engines that are critical, not used frequently, as frequently as a leaf blower perhaps, but still used nonetheless in certain instances. So that's my suggestion.
May I address some of your points? Because I think what I was recommending is incorporate some of those. So in terms of the scope, what I was saying is not all soars. I was saying blowers and other two-stroke engines. And there are economies of scale by including the whackers and the trimmers because they have interchangeable batteries. So to bundle those together, those are the worst polluters, and those are the ones that we should include. Generators, actually, that bill that the state legislature passed to phase out the sale of these soars originally included generators, there was a lot of pushback, and it got taken out. I hate those generators. I would like to get rid of the ones that the food trucks have, you know, that they, they power the food truck, they sit there on the side of the street. But anyway, that's not what I'm proposing we do today. I'm, or in this, you know, I'm saying just the two-stroke, which is consistent with the AGSA, what they call AGSA Level One, which is what our Parks Department has adopted. So I'm saying, let's adopt the same standard, which is that Level One, for the community that we've adopted for ourselves. You mentioned chainsaws, and that's why I said, let's, let's limit it to routine maintenance and not special, you know, jobs, because the chainsaws would be special jobs, not routine maintenance. So I was not thinking it would include chainsaws. You mentioned pressure washing. Well, I know there's tons of battery-operated, well, plug, no, are they battery-operated? Actually, I don't know. But pressure washing, I wasn't even thinking about pressure washing. I don't know with the, with the water issue, whether we should be pressure washing anything, but that's another story. I wasn't considering pressure washers as being part of this because we're talking about landscape.
Well, with the water issue, we shouldn't be talking about lawn mowing anyway. I mean, we're talking about.
We shouldn't have lawns.
We shouldn't have lawns to have lawn mowers.
I know.
And that might solve itself, I think, as we move forward.
But I wasn't including lawn, four-stroke lawn mowers or any lawn mowers in this because I think that, it's something we can come to someday, but right now, it's the worst of the worst are these two-stroke. It's the blowers, it's the whackers, it's the trimmers. And that's really what I'm saying is, let's just look at that, let's look at routine maintenance. And you had some other things which.
Are lawn mowers two-stroke or four-stroke?
I think most of them are four. Yeah, most of them are four.
Lawn mower would be permitted, then?
Would be permitted. Under what I'm, I'm saying, let's take a bite. And the bite does not include lawn mowers. It would be.
Leaf blowers.
Two-stroke. It would be blowers, edgers, you know, those weed whackers, the hedge trimmers, all that kind of stuff.
Do we, do we need a list now? Or can, can stop?
No, but if we just follow the AGSA Level One, AGSA Level One is already like a standard that we've adopted. And I'm just saying, let's use that. That would be my, my recommendation.
Okay. So let me just, not to address the, the policy you're saying, but we're giving, all the ideas here are giving direction to staff. We don't have to agree, correct, Mr. City Attorney? We don't have to have a majority agree. These are thoughts that we're giving to staff that they would look at and come back to us with responses to, correct?
That's correct. It's to provide direction on, on what's that you want staff to investigate and bring back.
Right. So each of us has our.
Right, right.
Our say and our list.
But I would just, also, if I could, I don't imagine the police enforcing this. I imagine code enforcement. I don't think the police are the right people to call.
There are police forces, in a sense, anyway.
Okay. But code enforcement isn't going to be the one out, you know, stopping a car going 100 miles an hour.
Don't look at me that way. That's, that's the Community Development Director's enforcement branch of his, his department.
That's what I would say. And anyway, and I think we should look at some of these, you know, South Pasadena seems to be leading the way here. Let's look at, let's look at what they're doing and some other cities that have been successful and not, I don't know. I, I don't want to resign myself to being powerless and saying we have to accept it and let the state lead the charge. I think we can lead. And, and yeah, we can't get 100% there. It's not going to be perfect, but I think we can make progress. Anyway.
I think this is also going to allow us to do better education ahead of the 2024 that's coming in.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So did staff hear all those great ideas? Elizabeth, I know you're going to be working on this a lot. So, of course, under David Jones' supervision. Is it clear, Mr. City Attorney, all those items we talked about?
I think if there's concurrence that we can go look at all the items you listed, then we can do that.
Yeah, don't take anything off the table. Everything that was said is, they're valid points and go towards.
Could we just get a motion to direct staff to investigate the items discussed by council?
I'll move for requesting the staff investigating, investigate the items we discussed.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Assatryan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes.
Mary Kasakian.
And that brings us to item 8F.
Yes.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
8F, City Attorney, regarding findings regarding approval of design review case number PDR 2101078 for a three-story, 82-room hotel at 1633 Victory Boulevard. One, resolution adopting a subsequent mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Two, motion sustaining the Design Review Board's decision to approve the design review case and making findings in support thereof.
Due to the absences of council members, may I request that we continue this without further notice?
October 18th, without further notice.
To October 18th. Does that, do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Moved by Assatryan, second. Roll call, please. Are there any callers, by the way?
No callers.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Assatryan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes.
Mary Kasakian.
Very good. Let's move on to oral communications.
We do not have any, any cards or calls.
Very good. Do we have new business?
Yes.
Yes.
Sir Brat.
I move that the claim for damages of Wawa Nessa General Insurance as sub regi of Razmik Altian for property damages be and hereby is approved for the total sum of $12,500. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant and said sum for delivery by the City Attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Assatryan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes.
Mary Kasakian.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's one more.
Oh, we have one more? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I was getting excited.
Do you have to read the, does she have to read the items?
No, you just read.
Oh, I just read it. Okay. So I move that the City Attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate a legal action in Los Angeles Superior Court. The names of the defendants and other particulars shall be disclosed, disclosable upon the filling and service of said action. Upon the cross defendant, the City Attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said manner. That's legal.
Second.
Okay, there you go.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Assatryan.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Devine. Mayor Protam Najarian.
Yes.
Mary Kasakian.
Okay, now.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.